I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, April 10th, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Madeira.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin, and we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
All right. Thank you so much. We will now move on to our department updates. Let's see, Ms. Kelly is here via Teams. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Just a few updates. As of April 8th, emergency visits for COVID-like illness has decreased, but wastewater concentrations are still elevated. Flu activity is minimal. There are six confirmed measles cases in Allen County as of yesterday. Healthcare providers recommend children receive the MMR vaccine between 12 and 15 months of age and again between four and six years of age. Two doses of the vaccine are 97% effective in preventing measles and providing protection for life. The Health Department is hosting another MMR vaccine mobile clinic on April 21st. This will be held at the Monroe County Public Library Ellisville Branch from 12 to 6:00 PM.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I think it was just a matter of time before the cases made their way into Indiana. I think this is a very scary time. I'm very glad that my loved ones and myself are vaccinated, and I urge everyone out there to get themselves and their loved ones vaccinated so we don't have the catastrophic loss of life that we have seen in Texas.
Yeah, for sure. It's really frightening, really frightening. All right. I don't have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate you being here. All right. Any other department updates for us?
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everyone is doing well. I'd like to introduce to you our new transition team director, retired from the state police, Todd Smith. Let me just give you some of his backgrounds, accomplishments here. He's been with the Indiana State Police for 38 years, obtained his law degree from Indiana University in 2004. He was the chief counsel for Indiana State Police for 18 years, also chief counsel during the entire construction process, including site selection, procurements, contracting, design, owner representative, punchline, punch list, sorry, building turnover and warranty work for three Indiana State Police posts and three new regional state police laboratories. For over 12 years, he has served as general counsel for Indiana sheriff's agencies. He also is the primary policy author of Indiana State Police and three Indiana sheriff's offices. Co-author of Correctional Policy Manual in compliance with Indiana jail standard currently in use with several Indiana sheriff's offices. Todd has been my co-instructor training for cultural awareness for law enforcement for 12 years. We instructed over 10,000 students in the topic throughout the United States. Todd and I also co-instruct numerous programs to improve police-community relationship. With that being said, I introduce you to Todd Smith, retired from Indiana State Police.
So, as the sheriff said, I'm retiring my job of 38 years with the Indiana State Police to take on this position, and I'm really excited to have the opportunity to work again with Sheriff Marte. We've worked together for a number of years. Most of that time, I was his supervisor, so now he gets an opportunity to be mine. So, I don't know if there's going to be a little bit of payback here, but we'll see. The duties and responsibilities of this position, as I told the council, have a significant overlap with what I've done with the Indiana State Police for the last 20 years. I've met the team, the transition team. It's a great group of guys, and I think we're really going to do good things. We're already neck-deep into what we're doing, and I'm really excited to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. It's nice to meet you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Give you a warm welcome from all of us. It's going to be, as Commissioner Thomas said, wonderful to work with you, and welcome to the team.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. We appreciate you all coming in.
Thank you.
Any other departments have an update to offer? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is the portion of our meeting reserved for public comment for items that are not on our agenda. We do ask folks to limit their commentary to three minutes per person. Please give us your name and county of residence. So, anybody online, raise your hand on Teams, or you can come to the podium here in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, please.
I would like to approve the minutes from April 3rd, 2025.
I will second that motion. And do you have any comments, corrections, or edits?
I do not.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April 3rd, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move for approval of the claims docket for accounts payable from April 10th, 2025.
I will second that. Ms. Gayardle, good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for April 10th, 2025 totals $1,105,692.24, and this includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none.
I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable, April 10th, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. New business, please.
I would like to move for approval of Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving LLC for parking lots, seal and stripe. Fund names 2021 GeoBond and LIT Special Purpose. Fund numbers 4814 and 114.
I will second that. Mr. Griffiths, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope you all are doing so well.
And you, as well.
I'm here to request the acceptance of proposals submitted by Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving to clean, fill surface cracks, apply asphalt sealant, and repaint the stripes between parking spots in the amount of $2,000 at the health building and in the amount of $4,000 at the youth services bureau for a total project cost of $6,000.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none.
Yeah. I know we're going to be doing some construction work, renovation work inside the health building. This is not going to be an issue to have this done first or in terms of, because there's not going to be, like, big, heavy trucks coming in or supplies or materials using that parking lot?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Hopefully, it will have time to cure up, and I'm not completely familiar with the time overlap between the two.
Yeah, I think that's my question.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
If we could get the blacktop resealed after all the heavy equipments in, where, before it's cured.
Right, right. So, yeah, I guess, just, you know, Richard will work with you on that and give you the info you need, so it'd be great. Thank you. Thanks for doing this. It's something we need.
Very much so.
There's, like, six versions of stripes in that lot, and whatever we can do to accommodate that would be really good.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All those in favor of approving the Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving LLC parking lot seal and stripe agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the Bloomington Transit Agreement. Fund name, county general. Fund number 1,000 in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
I will second that. E, good morning.
Hello. This, over the years, the county has had a partnership with Bloomington Transit to provide bus access as requested. That's looked in a different, depending on the year, and the Bloomington Transit is modernizing their system, which requires the use of an app to ride the bus. And so, this is formalizing an agreement with Bloomington Transit to give us access to that app and then also be able to share data with them to make sure we're paying for appropriate numbers of bus rides and things like that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none. This is a great program, and thank you so much for helping to bring it about.
Yeah, it's really a great option for employees who, you know, live inside the city limits or in the bus service area and work here downtown. It's going to be very useful.
Agree.
Yeah, great thing to offer. Appreciate that. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Bloomington Transit Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I would like to move for approval of the Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving LLC On-Call Service Agreement. Fund names, county general, parks non-reverting. Fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179 in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
I will second that. Ms. Whitmer, good morning.
This is just an on-call basis. One year, we didn't use any of our asphalt, but you never know when we have a bad winter. We have potholes, and we need a crack fill on the greenways, so we just have it just in case.
Excellent. Good deal. Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
Nope. This is one of those essential agreements that we just approve of. So, and again, I think one of the things I would like to just mention, too, is that one of the things that I've learned getting into county government is it just takes so many cogs and wheels that you never see unless you watch these meetings. So, unfortunately, not all of these cogs and wheels are on-site. Some of them are on-call, so thanks.
Yeah, and I appreciate, again, that we're using a local company. It's really always a good, always a good thing for us, so thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving LLC On-Call Service Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I'd like to move to approve Bloodso, Rieger, Cooper, James On-Call Service Agreement. Fund names, county general and parks non-reverting. Fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179 in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
I will second that. Ms. Whitmer?
This is the same thing we've been doing for years. In case things pop up, we need a quick survey, or we need advice on, you know, where to put the water. This makes it easier to take care of those little matters fast.
Yeah, for sure. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none.
All right. I don't either. This is, makes a lot of sense to have this on-call, because if you need help, you don't, you don't, you aren't going to be able to wait for a meeting. So, I appreciate that thinking ahead. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. It looks like we have a hand raised in Teams.
My name is Leigh Greenpaper. I'm resident of Monroe County. I was just, I was just thinking about these contracts, and if you have years and years of data, is that how you inform the amount that you're paying for these services? Because it seems like to me that for the service contract, you're going to be paying, you know, $10,000 for it, but does that, do you have history to show that that's the amount that you need, or is there data proving that $10,000 is the right number?
All right, thank you. Thank you for that question. It's up to Whitmer if she wants to answer that, but...
It's just an educated amount that we, in case something big happens. Normally, sometimes we don't use any of the vendors at all, and we don't pay them anything for the entire contract. Bloodso, I think, the last time, we paid him a couple thousand dollars, but you never know what's going to pop up at a park. So, most times, we pay a lot less than not to exceed amount.
It is a smart idea to have these in place, because, as I noted, it's difficult to, you know, deal with an emergency issue if you don't have this kind of a contract in place. So, that's going to be, this is about thinking ahead and planning ahead. And, you know, if something came up and it cost $8,000 because it was an emergency and it was huge, I can say, "Let's make sure I've got enough not to exceed in this contract now to manage that additional if something else happens."
Correct.
Yeah. All right, excellent. Thank you so much. TSD, we don't have captions on our screen. I don't know if you could address that for us. Thank you. Just realized that, because it was hard to hear the caller.
There we go.
But we did hear, but we did hear. Thank you so much. All right. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Bloodso, Rieger, Cooper, James On-Call Service Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I'd like to move Commercial Service On-Call Service Agreement. Fund names, county general and parks non-reverting. Fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179.
I will second that motion for approval. Ms. Whitmer, more on-call.
Yes, this is commercial service, and here's an example. Just a few weeks ago, we had an emergency in our, I'll call it a lift tank for sewage for one of our restrooms, and we called Commercial Service. They came out. We figured out what the pump was, you know, for a couple hundred dollars, which is very important to keep a restroom open. So, and the reason why the amount is $15,000, say, for instance, we get a lightning strike at Cars Farm Park, and it takes out a completely HVAC system or water heater system, it's probably going to cost up to that. That's worst-case scenario, and you can say, "Oh, what about insurance?" Well, insurance doesn't cover any, anything like that. So, we have to get that up and going. We have renters coming in. So, good news is, if everything works fine, we don't spend a dime if we get a lightning strike.
Covered.
Which we actually do get out at, out at the park.
Oh, this year?
Not this year, but we, you know, for some reason, the storms seem to pass over the fairgrounds in Cars Farm Park, and we do have a lot of power issues out there. That's, I assume, more a Duke Energy problem, but things happen. Surges happen.
And insurance is not, does not pay out right away either. I mean, that's the thing. You can't call the insurance company and go, "We need this fixed tomorrow."
Right. And the deductible is not, the deductible's high in the county for good reason.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
No, and I think that one of the common things that people, members of the public, might assume with these contracts is that we're, you know, going to pay this money to those service providers no matter what, but that's only if something happens. And if something happens, it's like, that's when the contract springs into being, and, you know, we have the privilege of calling on people at odd hours if we have these on-call service agreements set up, but we don't necessarily pay out that, that dollar amount unless, again, we incur an expense.
You have to look at, this one expires 5/1 of '26, so we have a whole season.
Uh-huh, yes.
It's good. No, and I appreciate you coming in and doing these all at once, and that they are a year, and that, you know, you can look at usage over the year and make determinations for the future. All right, see if there's any public comment on this item. Can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Commercial Service On-Call Service Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0. We've got another one.
I'd like to move to approve the Nathaniel Hancock Service Agreement. Fund names, county general, parks non-reverting. Fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179.
I will second that. Ms. Whitmer?
This was very important to us, and we haven't really spent that much, probably in the last five years, no more than $500. And what our database is for the park board is that's how we compare our numbers with the auditor's office. And as with databases, you have to keep updating them, or funky things happen, and plus, we want Nate to maybe upgrade some of our other databases that we have, because that's not a service TSD does. In order for us to keep track of everything, we have to have help, and Nate, Nate does it at a very nice price. He's local. Everyone thinks, "Oh, this is easy. There's millions of people who do this." I guarantee you, it's very difficult to find people who will stay in this community and you can rely on, and they understand the database year after year. If not, it's like, "Oh, find a student." Well, that student's gone.
Yeah, right. All right. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none. This is very important.
And appreciate, again, having this on standby if needed. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Nathaniel Hancock Service Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next two items together, please.
Sure. I'd like to move for Computer Systems Incorporated CSI Service Agreement Renewal. Fund name, Recorders Perpetuation Fund. Fund number 1189 in the amount of $15,840. I'd also like to move for approval of Computer Systems Incorporated or CSI Service Agreement Renewal. Fund name, Recorders Perpetuation Fund. Fund number 1189 in the amount of $27,768.94.
I will second those. Recorder Swain, good morning.
Good morning. It's good to see you both.
See you all.
So, this is our annual contracts with our software provider for our land records management system, and it's two separate parts. We contract with Computer Systems Incorporated, otherwise known as CSI, for these two different agreements, and it's on an annual basis. So, we always have the ability to renegotiate every year. And we did that last year when our TSD took over the simple maintenance of the peripherals, our scanners, our label printers, receipt printers, but for the higher issues, for server issues or network issues, that's what the support system agreement is for. The proposal also includes our annual imaging agreement where we pull images in from those scanners that I just mentioned, the ones that come in over the counter or through the mail rather than electronic recording, and so that's part of it as well. The software, we actually have a very nice integrated system now where we are able to take credit cards over the phone again and provide that service or take credit cards in person as well. I know that was an issue in years past, especially. So, that's been reinstated. We also added a fourth e-recording partner, and this is all integrated, makes it very easy for our staff and for us to... reconciliation, so. Any questions?
Could you have comments or questions?
No, I think this sounds very specialized. There's not too many services that do what we need to do here, and so this is essential.
Yeah, I appreciate this. So, hardware, one, software, the other. Makes sense. I actually have a question for you that is not related to either of these.
Okay.
And I was driving here, sorry to do this to you, but I was driving here today and heard an ad about titles and people stealing titles and title scams, and what do, what do we have in place in Monroe County?
Wonderful question, Commissioner Thomas.
So, people don't spend money on something.
Right. We actually offer a free service. It's free to the county. We don't pay anything for it. It's also free to property owners here in Monroe County. It's called Property Watch, and you can sign up online at DoxPop.com. That's D-O-X-P-O-P dot com. It's very simple. If you have any problems, you can call DoxPop, which is one of our business partners, to have them step you through the process. Basically, you sign up for alerts that whenever something is recorded in our office that pertains to your property, you can do it by address or by name, but if you're Julie Thomas, that might be a little bit more common name, so you would want to put your actual address in, and it goes by legal description as well. I do want to caution people that if you are out in the county and you have what's called a meets and bounds legal description, you may get alerted if something in that same section, township, and range is recorded. So, if your neighbor records something, you might get an alert as well, because it can't differentiate between the two.
Got it. Yeah, makes sense. Very good. Excellent. Thank you. I heard that today, and I thought, "Dang, I hope people aren't spending money on this." You know?
Now, it's completely free, and like I said, it will alert you. We've had several people sign up for it. We've also had several calls into our office when they get the alert, and we're happy to look those records up for people and let them know whether it's their property or a neighbor's property and what the document is.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the two separate Computer Systems Inc. CSI Service Agreement Renewal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
I'd like to move for approval of North Park Office State Road 45 subdivision, I'm sorry, 46 subdivision inventory acceptance.
I will second that. Mr. Ayers, good morning. Thanks for joining us today.
Good morning. Got a request for road acceptance for a new segment of North Lennel Drive as part of the North Park PUD. The road does, or the road was built to our specs, meets ASHTO standards. Developer's just asking for us to request it. He is, I believe, on Teams as well, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none.
No, this makes total sense. Project's done. It looks good, and appreciate you bringing this forward. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure the developer does, too. All right. Although, snow season's over, but still. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the North Park Office State Road 46 subdivision inventory acceptance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. All right. Oh, gosh. You know, this is one... Ah, there it is. It's unfrozen now. Anyway, so we don't have any appointments today. Just to note that we do have, our next meeting will be Thursday, April 17th. I'll make sure that you also know that we are not meeting on the 24th of April. We do want to encourage, especially after the flooding and storms of the past week, for folks to sign up on our residential alert system. If you go to CO.Monroe.in.us and click on the megaphone, you will receive information like the freeze warning, notice... like the freeze warning notice I just got for tonight. Go cover those plants. But it's a free service that we provide to all residents of the county, and it does provide emergency information and weather updates and weather warnings in a very timely way, and it was really helpful to have it this past, over this past storm. So, there is still, are still COVID tests available at the Health Department, and that's at 119 West 7th Street, and then also at the Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. And again, if, if you're unsure about your MMR vaccination status, please contact our Health Department. They will help you out. We do continue to have office hours via Teams, and you just go to the calendar on our homepage and join us for a conversation. We're looking forward to hearing from you. And the next blood drives are Thursday, May 8, from 1:00 to 6:00, and Wednesday, June 4, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00. These are at Ivy Tech in room C130A and B. This is something that we're doing in conjunction with Ivy Tech and our Emergency Management Department and the Red Cross. Please make an appointment at theredcross.org if you can in advance. I don't have anything else for announcements. Do you have anything? Okay, all right. We do have a work session item for planning. You want to come back at 10:45?
That's great.
Great. We will come back at 10:45 for our work session. Thank you, everyone. Be well, stay safe, and we are adjourned. Thanks, TSD. Thanks, CATS.